Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves to record now by standing and stating their name and address. Just to be clear, if you're only planning on recording your child's award, you don't need to identify yourself for the record. And I ask that everyone please put all electronic devices in silent mode at this time. Counselor Schultz, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Squallia.
Present.
Counselor Van Hasenga.
Here.
President Zarella.
Here.
Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Kuchar.
Here.
Counselor Cragan.
Here.
Counselor Cruz.
Here.
Counselor Deenatali.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Thank you very much. In anticipation of the possibility of public comment, extensive public comment on one of the items on the agenda this evening, I would ask for unanimous consent to take the special presentation of awards out of order and put it before the other items on the agenda so that we're not holding up all these wonderful children and families through stuff that frankly, they probably don't want to have to sit through. I see no objection. So we now have a special presentation of trophies from the Pittsburgh Police Department to the winners of the Dog License Awareness Poster Contest. The first honorable mention, and I apologize to anyone whose name I mispronounce, the first honorable mention is Maria Uribe Calderon. Please approach the center. Come on up and be ready.
Mrs. Morrison, would you accept on behalf of Maria? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next honorable mention, Aaliyah Dur.
Come say your name and how many dogs you have.
My name is Aaliyah Dur and I used to have one dog. Her name was Princess and I have two cats. One's a girl and one's a boy. The girl's name is Phoenix and the boy's name's Logan.
Well, congratulations. Next, we have Asia Warren. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Asia Warren and I am in fourth grade and I have, I got a dog yesterday and I have a, I have a couple cats and I have a hamster of my own.
Excellent. Congratulations on the award and the new dog. And as you approach, if you need to adjust the microphone, feel free. They are very bendy, so everyone's a different height and everyone's gonna need it at a different position. Next, we have Jaden Bello Arroyo. Come on up.
My name is Jaden Bello and I have three dogs and their names is Chloe, Cooper, and Kuchi and I'm in third grade.
Excellent. Congratulations. And now our first prize winner, Isabella Davila Leon.
Hello, my name is Isabella and I have two dogs. One's called Bingo and one is called Gaje Gaje.
Congratulations, Isabella.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, fellow counselors. Now, just if we can take a moment and get our winners up front with their trophies and their original artwork, which I have right here, so we can get a photograph so their parents, entourage, fans can all get photographs, that'd be great.
Absolutely. And I would ask, as usual, with photography opportunities, that everyone clear the center of the bench so that we're not photobombing them.
All right, so where's our trophy winners? Okay, so your, her official. Okay, Maria, you're Isabella Morrison. Come on up. And then we have, this is Asia. This is yours, so you can hold that up. So Asia, really good. And then we have Aaliyah. There you are. And then we have Jaden. All right, so let's get everyone arranged. We've got the teats. Let's put you in the center with honorable mention on either side. Mrs. Morrison, here. Him on the side. Right, 100 pounds, very nice. Very nice. I know, it's hard to hold both things, but we'll hold both of those. Okay, Mayor, where's Mayor?
Mayor.
I'd also like to say thank you to Counselors Schmaler and designed the music poster. And I hope that our counselors can put the poster they have where, they can put it wherever in their board. Say cheese. Asia, close up of your picture.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your job. I didn't have good angle. Hold on. I just wanted a close-up of the picture. Thank you. And Mrs. Morrison, I'm gonna give you one of the prizes. Good job. I'd like to say Mrs. Morrison organized, made, built, and created these artifacts. So thanks.
Thank you very much. And this is an excellent opportunity. I'm very glad to have had you all here tonight. Congratulations and keep up the good work. I hope to see you all on this bench one of these days.
I feel like I'm aging. I feel like I'm aging and she isn't.
It takes a while at a certain point, you know, like to notice the difference. And all of a sudden.
She looks the same as she did.
Got some time anyway while they finish up.
You got it.
I don't know if I have it in here or not.
Because the public Wi-Fi appears down.
What are you looking for?
Boy, that's the biggest smile I ever saw.
He lost it.
Looks like it's working.
All right. Moving back to our regularly scheduled agenda, public forum. The public had been advised of the opportunity to offer comments either in writing or via Zoom. None have requested such. So if there is anyone in the audience wishing to speak on any item on the agenda, please approach the podium, identify yourself by name and address, and the agenda item on which you wish to speak. And you may speak for no more than two minutes on that topic. Seeing none? That was a lot faster than I thought it might be. There is no report of the appointments committee at this time. Counselor Cruz, a report of the committee on records, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The records appear to be in order. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report of the committee on records. If there is no objection, it is accepted. Now, we have a motion, rather, we have a communication from myself, President Zarella, for the appointment of the city clerk. And I am missing a copy of that. Does anyone have a copy? Thank you. Thank you, counselor.
What are you looking for?
My letter, yeah.
I think that's when you signed up.
Uh, no, this is, this is the resume. But thank you.
Here.
Excellent. Thank you, counselor. I'm going to read it from over here and hopefully everyone can hear me. It reads, "Dear Counselors, in accordance with the Code of the City of Pittsburgh, Chapter Three, Section Three-Dash-One-Four, on April 4th, 2022, I requested confirmation from the City Council of my appointment of Ms. Joanna L. Bellotta Simeone as city clerk. This appointment is the result of the recommendation of the search committee appointed on February 10th, 2022. The term of this appointment shall begin on April 19th, 2022, pending City Council confirmation, for a period of three years. Please do not hesitate to contact my office should you have any questions related to this matter." Thank you. Now, if you would, please. Feel free to introduce yourself to the council and say, make any statement you'd like to make.
Hi, Joanna Bellotta Simeone. I go by Joanna Bellotta. I live in Lunenburg. I am currently the town clerk for the town of Maynard, which I absolutely love being a town clerk. I love customer service and I'm very, very excited and thankful and grateful for the opportunity to be here in Pittsburgh.
Thank you. I'd like to briefly outline the process that led us here. We had applications from 72 applicants when the position was advertised. And then after the elections were over and the holidays were over and I knew that I was actually going to be president the following year, I put together a search committee of what was originally going to be seven members. It wound up being six with one non-voting, consisting of, I'm actually going to read it off just so I don't forget anyone as I'm going through my memory, but consisting of, ah, nope, wrong one. I'm sorry, I'm a little disorganized with my papers tonight. Ah, here we go. Myself, Amanda Alfred, our current provisional city clerk, who was the non-voting member, Anne Cervantes, the city treasurer and tax collector, Susan Davis, director of HR, who was also non-voting and was the facilitator of the process, Luisa Fernandez with the Pittsburgh Public Schools, Tom Hughes, a former city counselor and civic leader, and Kristi Mylot, who has served the city in many capacities over the years and is currently a civilian, so to speak. The aim in assembling the committee was to ensure that we had input from all of the various stakeholders that deal with the city clerk's office. I didn't want it to just be council or just city government, but I also didn't want to put all the emphasis on dealing with the public because there's a lot of internal work that the city clerk needs to do as well. So we have here representative of the city departments, representative of both the schools and the Hispanic community, representative of the African-American community, representative who is very closely tied in with various low-income and elder services. And basically, the goal was to make sure that the candidate we found was someone who would work well with all these different groups of stakeholders, not just one or a We had four meetings of this search committee. Those were, the first was held on February 16th, in which we had asked the committee members to narrow down those 72 applicants to their top 10. As it turns out, we were only able to identify four suitable candidates, as the rest lacked relevant experience pretty much in its entirety. And of those four, one withdrew prior to the interview process for personal reasons. We then interviewed the remaining three candidates across two different days with a battery of around 30-ish questions that were common across all applicants. Then we held two further committee meetings to review our findings and to reach a decision. Ultimately, the committee was unanimous in selecting Ms. Bellotta as our candidate. This is very much, now, I've had questions brought to me regarding resume and experience and so forth, and I am very eager to point out that this is definitely one of those scenarios where the paper resume does not tell the full story. What looks like a short duration in municipal office elies the fact that she has had a transformative effect on the office that she's worked in and managed to run a successful presidential election less than a full month after her appointment as city clerk. That is, quite frankly, an accomplishment that I don't think any of us sitting on this bench, with the possible exception of Amanda, could pull off. So she presented herself as very intelligent, very able to grasp and acquire new skills and knowledge in a short time and under pressure, and also, above all, very enthusiastic about the city of Pittsburgh, both in expression, but also in the fact, and this surprised me because I've never heard of anyone doing this before, how many, how many hours of city council meetings was it that you said you had watched before?
Two years. I'm done to two years. I've watched two years of your city council meetings. I watched the mayor's state of address today, so I just wanted to be informed. I like to be able to have conversation. I was excited because I know you like to meet appointments, so I'm glad that I'm coming to meet you. So I just want to be educated and be able to have dialogue with the people I'm interacting with.
Yeah, so, I mean, really, wow. That's, if I were trying to research this city council, I might, you know, pick out a few highlight videos and skim through maybe two or three hours' worth of material. Two years' worth of council meetings. We sat through them and they were long.
Yeah, I just watched the school committee. I talked to Amanda about the school committee, one in the tally of the votes, and how that process worked, so I was able to see that. And it helps. It helps. So when now the next meeting that happens, I know the setup and how it's going to work.
So I am very enthusiastic to recommend this candidate to the council. I would also like to just point out that this was an unusually long process. Part of it was due to the timing of the resignation that we were filling. But I have heard, to my distress, rumors that people are trying to place blame on the HR department or other city officials for the delay. And I want to emphatically state that that is not the case. This was not a process that the HR department or the mayoral administration were tasked with running. This was a process that was on my plate, and Ms. Davis has been nothing but helpful, efficient, and professional throughout. So I feel that all the delays were ultimately excusable due to, as I said, elections, holidays, an illness on my part, to be honest. But if you feel otherwise, whether on this bench or in the public, it's me you should be looking at, not anyone else. This is, this was my process, my committee, and any mistakes were my mistakes. So, that being said, I feel we have made the right decision, and I would strongly urge my fellow counselors to approve this appointment. That said, I will open it up to questions from the council, and I see Counselor Squallia.
Thank you, President Zarella. I appreciate that you answered a majority of my questions that I sent on Sunday. The largest concern that I have, you know, and just to start, you know, Joanna's resume looks fantastic and I really appreciate the enthusiasm, and I appreciate you looking into our meetings and watching so many hours. However, having said that, I have heard multiple complaints from candidates for the city clerk position over the past five to seven months of this appointment process that there was a lack of communication to applicants that applied for this position in September, October 2021-ish, and they, they didn't know if they were getting interviewed or what the process was. So I would like to see in the future more communication to applicants. And in having said that, the delay, the delay from September, October 2021 to a search committee in February 10th, 2022, and the first meeting being February 16th, I don't find that to be appropriate. Really, that, that was too long of a process. It helps, you know, candidates applying for this position, I would hope, would expect a timelier response from the city of Pittsburgh. So I'd like to see that improved in the future. Thank you.
Fair enough. Counselor Deenatali.
Thank you. I, I want to thank the president for his statements about bearing the responsibility for any criticisms that were laid about the process and its length. You know, he said it, he said it correctly, that, you know, whether it's the mayor or the president in this case is the appointing authority, you know, they ultimately drive the process. Human resources, at least in my 20 years of private sector experience, they are a repository. They, they, they require requisitions for positions. If someone resigns or someone, you know, quits or leaves, you know, HR doesn't take it upon themselves to post the job right away. They have to wait for the department head or the appointing authority to submit a requisition with what they're looking for, and then HR's responsibility is to post it, get the applications, and give the applications to the appointing authority. The HR department doesn't do much beyond that with respect to the hiring process until the end of the process, when then they start processing the person who gets selected. So I'm glad that he rightfully articulated who is responsible for this process and also providing us background on what the process entailed. And, you know, I'm here this evening to assess you based on your merits and your qualifications. And I've been consistent with that on day one in my 16 years here, in that sometimes in certain cases, these appointment processes get muddied by the search committees or who wasn't selected. And I'm not saying anyone here is doing that, but I've experienced in the past that some candidates who were selected by the appointing authority were not voted favorably upon because someone else didn't get the job. I think that's wrong. I think our part of the process as counselors is to look at who was selected. And if the person is not qualified as a subject, as a judgment that we each make individually, that may speak to the process that was employed. And reading your resume and your credentials, which is all I really have to go on, the president said earlier that the resume doesn't tell the full story. And I agree, obviously. I mean, you can't really gather much about a candidate based on what's on paper. You gotta, you know, research and do more questions and what you went through. The problem is with some of these search committees, or all of them in fact, they're not very transparent for those who have to make the decision. So while Counselor Zarella, President Zarella, was throughout the process, and I trust his judgment, a lot of us have nothing to go on but the resume. We were not part of the search committee. I didn't even know who was on the search committee till yesterday. I have no minutes of the search committee meetings. I don't know what you were asked. I don't know how you responded. I don't know any of that stuff. And whether it's debatable or not that that should not be something I am privy to as a voting member of this council, it's never been privy to me before. I've never been given that information before, whether it's allowed or not. And I'm not saying I want the information from all the candidates. I don't care. I only want the information if I'm talking about this about you. I don't care about anybody else who applied, what their responses were, how they were perceived. I care about you. You were selected. But it's unfortunate, and I've said this in other situations, so I'm being consistent here, that we don't have the full scope of what you brought to the table other than the resume. And that's why for me personally, I'm not a big fan of these search committees. I think they're excessive. I think they're optically pleasing. I think, and this is just my opinion, probably most people aren't going to agree with me, but I think the council president with the assistant city solicitor of city clerk or provisional clerk and the HR director could have made this decision in a month after all the applications were, without going through the rigors of a search committee. Because a search committee is an advisory board. They're not statutorily required. President could get unanimous vote from a committee and go, "I'm not going with this person. I'm going with this person." And for me as a voting member, and I-
Counselor president, point of order, is the opinion-
You know something? I'm gonna say something right now. I am sick and tired of this point of order stuff.
Counselor, a point of order has been raised. It may be sustained or denied. Counselor, would you explain what your point of order is?
Well, the point of order is that we're not here for opinion on the search committee. We're, we're here to, to ask the applicant, the candidate questions if we need to.
I, I am in this case happy to permit counselors to discuss the process that led us here if it's pertinent, if it's pertinent to their decision-making. You can go ahead, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually wrapping up, so for those who want to, you know, want to get out of here, I apologize. You know, the search committee is an advisory board, and I weighed this in my decision on your credentials. And I don't believe that the search committee should dictate who gets selected. It's irrelevant to me. And that most recent example before you proved that out. So the resume that I saw of you was very extensive, and I have been on many search committees and on many of these appointments where just because the experience is not 25-year scope doesn't mean the candidate is not worthy of the position or qualified. I looked at the fact that, yes, based on your resume, you went through a presidential election year. You served as the city clerk or town clerk for over two years in Maynard, so you have the experience. I think more than two years is a pretty good foundation. And if anything, you're, you're eager, in my estimation, to take on more work because how many people live in Maynard? How many?
10,750.
So, so the population here is almost quadruple. So it's a lot more work. I'm sure you'll have a lot more staff, but, and the staff is fantastic, so they'll get you rolling right away. But, you know, that shows me that you want a challenge, and this is a challenge because of the fact that it is that big of a increase in scope and work effort. So I'm very encouraged by that. And the fact that you have two years of experience in town clerkship is good enough for me because you know the basics, you know all of the aspects of the job, and this really is just going to be a challenge in the sense of a workload increase. But I'm sure you, you know, you have the staff to support you in that, unlike where you, did you have, how many people did you have working for you in Maynard? Just one. And we have the, you know, the assistant clerk, and I believe we have two and a half people besides, so there's three and a half full-time employees that you'll be responsible for working with you. So it'll really help you out getting your, getting hitting the ground running. So I am here to say that I will gladly support your confirmation based on my analysis of your resume and what I've heard, and I have no doubt that you'll, you'll do just- So, so the population here is almost quadruple.
Correct.
So it's a lot more work. I'm sure you'll have a lot more staff, but, and the staff is fantastic, so they'll get you rolling right away. But, you know, that shows me that you want a challenge. And this is a challenge because of the fact that it is that big of an increase in scope and work effort. So I'm very encouraged by that. And the fact that you have two years of experience in, in town clerkship is good enough for me because you know the basics, you know all of the aspects of the job, and this really is just going to be a challenge in the sense of a workload increase. But I'm sure you, you know, you have the staff to support you in that, unlike where you, did you have, how many people did you have working for you in Maynard? Just one. And we have the, you know, the assistant clerk, and I believe we have two and a half people besides, so there's three and a half full-time employees that you'll be responsible for, working with you. So it'll really help you out getting your, your, getting hitting the ground running. So I am here to say that I will gladly support your confirmation, based on my analysis of your resume and what I've heard. And I have no doubt that you'll, you'll do just fine here, and I look very much forward to working with you. And the fact that you, what's the word I want to use? You tortured yourself in watching all those meetings? I got to tell you, I don't make a point of ever watching the meetings after them. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
That shows your dedication and that you're willing to do the homework. So with that said, I will gladly support your confirmation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to Counselor Squaw Lea for the second time, I'd just like to briefly note a couple things. One is that I, I understand and sympathize with some of the objections that Counselor Giannatoli has to the search committee process. It is, it is somewhat cumbersome, and it is not strictly required. But I will say that in this instance, the various search committee members did, at times, raise points or perspectives that I would not have thought of otherwise. Basically, they accomplished the goal that I wanted them to accomplish. They gave me perspectives that I, as me, you know, pick whatever demographic characteristic you want to apply to me, I can't see what they see. And I'm not tied into the communities that they're tied into. And that was very, very helpful. That said, if in any future instance, there is another occasion for such a process, and anyone, councilor or otherwise, has any strong opinions on how it ought to run, very sincerely, not sarcastically, I would invite them to pick up the phone and call me. I'm, I am always open to discussion. I may agree, I may disagree, but if you've got an idea on how we can make things better, I want to hear it. A brief explanatory note that I meant to give at the beginning, just for the sake of the record more than anything, this is not being referred to the Appointments Committee and does not require suspension of the rules for that because this is not an appointment of the mayor, which is what our rules and the charter refer to in terms of the Appointments Committee process. So that's just to clarify for anyone who was wondering, why are we not sending this to committee, or why are we not asking for a suspension on this? That said, I have counsel, actually, I'm sorry, I have Counselor Schultz for the first time.
Yes, I had a question. In looking at your resume, I, I saw that you, you know, were the town clerk in, in the town of Maynard. And was there, did you have any other experiences as a, as a clerk at any town or city? I saw a lot of different experiences. And if not, could you tell me what, which experience you think related most to being a, a city clerk?
Sure, absolutely. My first town clerk role is the town of Maynard. I was 25 years at Verizon right next door. I started here in 1987, took a management bio. I ended my career there with 150 union members selling, upselling on all billing calls, which nobody ever calls to say, I just wanted to call and see how I could spend some more money. So it was coming up with those objectives. So customer service and productivity are very embedded in who I am as a worker, because we were measured time-wise on everything we did at Verizon. So those are critical components for me. I believe customer service is really a skill set. You can learn job tasks, but to really care and be compassionate with people is, is a skill that you have. And I truly love interacting with people. So what happened in the town of Maynard is I volunteer at my local election in Lunenburg, and they knew that. And they, the clerk resigned four weeks before the presidential election in Maynard. And they said, oh, you work at the polls. Would you be interested in, you know, being the interim town clerk and running the presidential election? And I said, sure. And went upstairs and we started our 14 days straight of early voting, that I worked from 6:30 in the morning till 8 o'clock at night, then tallied the votes every day. So, and then the presidential election came, and it was phenomenal. I have to say how proud I was of myself. I, it just, it went very smoothly. 7,000 people came and voted, and we had 6,000 mail ballots, which was all new, that I had six election workers, the youngest being 72, that sat in a room, and we mailed them out, we scanned them back in, and they kind of taught me the ropes because they volunteer over and over. The week after the election, the Board of Selectmen appointed me as their town clerk, and I've been running ever since. And I absolutely love it. I absolutely love working the window, doing dog licenses, vitals. I attend every select board meeting, which is on Tuesday evening, so you fit right into my schedule that I currently have. And I'm just very excited about working with people and learning new things. I went and got my human resource certificate at Becker College four years ago. I just love to continue to learn and grow as a person and develop myself.
Thank you. Thank you for your answer. Thank you. I have Counselor Cregan for the first time.
Hi, Ms. Bilada, and very nice to, to see you again. We both have roots in Lunenburg. And I wanted to ask you, there is no crystal ball that will tell us, well, what are the challenges coming up? We didn't know two years before the last presidential election that mail-in ballots would be as vital a part of the voting process as they are. But given your experience, what, really, my, my question is, and I'll ask you this in a year, maybe, you know, what's coming up? I mean, the city clerk is one of the places where you, you really have to be perfect in the, you know, in the, the creation of documents and the, you know, compiling of information. And downstairs at City Hall, there is an awe-inspiring collection of ledgers that Ms. Alfred showed me that go back, you know, 100-plus years. Digression, back to the basics. What do you think is coming up? What are, like, the big challenges for the city clerk's position?
Well, we've got the primary, which they've determined now is September 6th, the Tuesday after Labor Day. So we'll have that. I did, I did go down and see the vault today.
Yeah.
I applied for, the town of Maynard has the CPC, Community Preservation. They voted that in, so tax dollars goes in. So I applied for, and I did give the, the search committee a copy of my proposal with the CPC. I applied for $200,000 to digitalize and archive all our records in the vault from 1953 back. They archived those, so they can be digitalized for public records. It's much quicker for people, if you have that online, to be able to go and just send them the link, here that is, and you email them that link back. So that helps in the long run, responding quicker to public records requests and answering those questions. So I did get approved for that. It's actually going to vote, their budget of everything they approved gets voted at town meeting. So that's scheduled to get voted at this May's town meeting, on May 16th, that would happen. And it's funny because they just emailed me and said, well, should we take that out of the, the warrant because will the new clerk be able to run that program for the year? Because it's $100,000 this year, $100,000 next year. And I said, no, absolutely, my assistant clerk. And when I got to Maynard, I clerked and conquered. The assistant clerk of 26 years retired. And I, right away, called her and said, would you be interested in doing some consulting? And she came to Maynard two, two to three days a week and, and kind of, because I was following what the previous clerks did, not knowing if it was right, wrong, or indifferent, this is how they did it, so that's how I did it. So I wanted to make sure I was doing things the correct way, filing, organizing, archiving, and they walked me through, Pat walked me through all that. So I, I think you could look at digitalizing some of those records and trying to get them up and going.
I'm someone who spends a day a week at the Historical Society. That's music to my ears. So really, really, really interested to hear about that because this is what we have. Our history is in documents. And we only know what happened in 1910 because we have a city report and we have supporting documents. So thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Vice President Van Helsinga.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for joining us tonight. I'm excited to have you under consideration for this position. I'm sure it will be, there will be some challenges in moving from your position in the town of Maynard to the City of Pittsburgh. It's a different form of local government, there's a different size of the communities. What do you think is the biggest challenge that you'll have to work for and prepare yourself to, to handle in making that move to here?
That's twofold for me. Because getting up to speed to where Amanda is, and because I, I just see what she's done watching the two years and the last eight months of what Amanda's done, she's done a phenomenal job. So for her to now teach me that, I'm blessed to have that. I didn't have that in Maynard. The clerk in Maynard had six-month service when I went there, so the assistant clerk was very new. So we didn't have that longevity that Amanda brings to the table. And now she's done this and has done this role totally and can get me prepared and get me where I need to be professionally and knowledge-wise to be able to be an outstanding clerk. And our whole office, as a team, will be outstanding.
Great.
We will exceed expectations.
Thank you. We have, oh.
After you, Counselor.
I yield the floor to you first, Counselor.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just, I also want to acknowledge the wonderful job that provisional clerk Alfred has done in her time here. There's been no, nothing lost, even despite the provisional title, it's just a title. She's done a wonderful job as our clerk, and I feel confident that she'll help you in your transition as well. Regarding the process that the committee and the search committee, I can't speak to when it began in September and October, but I can speak to when President Zarella reached out to me regarding the committee and diversity on that committee and how important it was to him that we get people, not for the sake of diversity, but also genuine representatives of our multicultural City of Pittsburgh. And I think that the committee did a terrific job, and President Zarella did a good job getting that committee together. So I feel confident in, in their vote, in their vote for you. And I also just want to add that I've got multiple unsolicited endorsements about you already from constituents that I didn't even ask people. They said, she's going to do a great job.
Oh, good.
I'll ever meet a nicer person.
Oh, that's nice. Thank you.
Unsolicited, they came up to me and said it. So, and that's pretty rare. So I feel very confident that you're going to do a great job and then welcome aboard. So that's my full, my full support. I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Squaw Lea for the second time.
Did you want to?
Oh.
Okay. I had, I thought of another concern regarding the search committee. I would have liked to see more city council representation, other than just you, President Zarella. In addition, the resume for Ms. Bilada Simeone, we didn't, councilors did not receive the resume until Monday evening. So I would have liked, you know, when we get our council agenda on Friday, I would have liked to get that resume in the packet and be able to contact you over the weekend and, and just have a discussion. But city, the city councilors here, we didn't receive your resume until last night. So that was disappointing. Additionally, I had a question for you. Are you, do you have any certificates in municipal clerk, you know, in, you know, any certificates or any designations, being a municipal clerk in the state of Massachusetts, anything? I don't see anything specifically on your resume, other than the experience as a town clerk.
I do not. I am a notary. I'm a justice of a peace, and I'm a commissioner to qualify, which can, so that people don't have to go to Boston notaries. Once they get their notary, they have to come in and get appointed, and usually you would have to go to Boston. If you're a commissioner to qualify, you can appoint and notarize their paperwork. To be a municipal state certification, you have to be a clerk for three years. I'm in the program at Plymouth State University, up in New Hampshire. We go every summer. Due to COVID, it was suspended last year. So they are working on doing a two-year program in one year to make us whole with that three years. But in three years, yes, I will get my clerk certification, but you physically have to be a clerk for three years to be able to obtain that.
So you are in the process of obtaining your municipal clerk certification in the Plymouth program?
Correct. I'm already signed up for this July. It's a week program. We go, we dorm with, it's, it's kind of like a co-op, where the same 26 clerks will all go for three years. We're in dorms, and, and we're just there. Amanda will talk about that as well. But I am all signed up, ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With reference to those concerns, I'll, I'll address them briefly. The resume was just a technical oversight. No big, you know, it happens occasionally when we're rushing to get documents out. And again, that was, you know, you want to point it at me. It was a last, late thing, and so there was a bit of a rush, and an attachment didn't get attached. But the intent certainly was to give councilors the resume ahead of time. As far as city council representation, I will note that when I asked Tom Hughes to be on the search committee, he was a counselor at that time, and I had every reason to anticipate his reelection. I didn't want to bring more councilors in because it was already going to be a rather large search committee in order to get all those stakeholder groups represented. I didn't want to bloat it further, and I didn't want to bias the committee too much towards the needs of the council as opposed to the needs of the community. But again, you know, when the time comes, if the time comes, that we're doing anything like this again, I invite input from anyone who wishes to give it. As it stands, however, we were actually already due to have, as I said, a seven-member committee, but one was unable to attend due to a family tragedy. To bring it above seven would have made it unreal. I can, I can see Ms. Davis kind of being, what would, what would the word be there? Gobsmacked, maybe? Yeah, apparently, a seven-member committee is already rather large for this sort of operation. So there simply wasn't room for more councilors without excluding other groups that I really wanted to have input from. That said, I have, Counselor Broshman, were you waiting to speak, or were you just indicating Counselor Cruz for me?
No, I'm going to speak.
All right, then, go right ahead, Counselor.
First of all, I want to tell you, I read your resume, so I don't want you to get offended when I talk. My address is going to go to the, the search committee and to the council president. Personally, personally, I'm very, very disappointed. Out of 72 people, 72, we couldn't find one person from Pittsburgh for a six-figure job, one person. Now, I talked to the previous clerk, Annie Farrell. She started with no experience, like you did a couple of years ago, and she became one of the best that we ever had. So to tell me that we were looking for experience and to take another job, a good-paying job, and put it in another community so they can take their money home, I'm very, very disappointed. I'm, I'm probably going to have to support you because if I say no, I'm not going to have the support of the council, and it'll be 10 to 1. But I'm very disappointed because here I am, sitting on this council, year after year after year, saying, we've got to hire Pittsburgh people. All our top-paying jobs are going out to the other communities to spend. Nothing gets back in here in Pittsburgh. Nothing. And it has nothing to do with Maynard. Your resume is great, great. But my argument is with the search committee and the president, it should have been a local person from the City of Pittsburgh that should have had this job. That's how I feel about it. And, and I think we make mountains of a mold, and we make the job bigger than what it's supposed to be. She said she had no experience a couple of years ago, because she started off working at the polls. And she's very good at what she does now. So what's that tell me? I know I'm hard to deal with. You're probably going to have to deal with me when you're in there. You're going to hear me coming because Amanda's sick of me already. So, but anyway, you know, that's my, my gripe. My gripe is, we're farming out the jobs, we're giving the good-paying jobs to different communities, they take their money and they, and they spend it in their community. Nothing comes back. So that's how I feel about the situation. So I sounded off, and I, I yield the floor, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. I will briefly address that. So the thing is, we did take, take a look at where people were coming from. When I say that there were very few qualified candidates, I want you to understand my meaning here. I'm not, I'm obviously not going to name names or give specific examples because that would be deeply inappropriate. But I will say, when I talk about people without qualifications, I'm talking about people who were checkout clerks, people who were retail employees, people who were office secretaries, and who apparently thought that that's what this job was. These are people who didn't, you could tell by reading their cover letters and their resumes, that they had not even researched what the position entailed. If we had stretched, we might have been able to get six to 10 viable candidates. And- And I believe only two or three of those that I have in my head were Pittsburgh residents. We did take that into account. If it had been a toss-up, if it had been a toss-up between candidates and one was in Pittsburgh and one was not, we certainly would have, you know, preferred a Pittsburgh candidate. No offense to Lunenburg or anything. But it wasn't a toss-up. The committee had no doubts that this was the top candidate. We weren't going to overlook practical factors for the sake of hiring from Pittsburgh. That wouldn't have been the right call. It is true that you can get a start in this line of work from a low amount of experience. But in this case, Ms. Belada started off as an assistant, then quickly got promoted up to full clerk, and now is coming in as city clerk. We're not hiring someone who has never worked in a, you know, municipal office before. And when she became town clerk, she wasn't someone who had never worked in a municipal office or with municipal government before. There's, there's a difference between entry level and no qualifications whatsoever. So I feel very strongly, and of course, you're always free to disagree, you know, I welcome your opinions, really. But I do feel very strongly, and I think the committee members were unable to attend tonight, but I think if you talk to any of them, they will tell you as well that they have no doubts that this was the correct decision. And that we did consider whether we could find someone in Pittsburgh to fill the spot. That said, I believe I have Counselor Fleming.
Yes, I just have a few comments. I want to say that I do agree with some Counselor Squallia's concerns and some Counselor Schultz that he had. But with that being said, and thank President Zarella for addressing those concerns, I want to say after sitting here and just listening to you answer the questions and seeing the enthusiasm you have that I will vote in favor of this appointment. And I just have one question. Is it Belada Simeone or just Ms. Simeone or Ms. Belada? Because I've heard three different.
My legal name is Belada Simeoni, but to try to give that to people in an email at work, B-I-L-O-T-I, I just go with Belada because it's easier for people to contact me, to email instead of that long email. I got married late, so, and my husband wanted me to hyphenate, and then I started typing and I said, "Okay, no, I'm going."
Okay, when I heard people, different people addressing you, I just wanted to.
I go like Belada, but my legal name, my signed documents are Belada Simeoni.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have, I'm sorry, were you raising your hand, Counselor Jantholi?
I just have one question for, if I could ask.
Well, this is your second time, and I've got one other person. Counselor Schultz first.
I yield the floor to Counselor.
Okay. Counselor Jantholi, go ahead.
I don't, I don't think it goes without saying, and I am guilty of this too, about discounting the fact, not factoring in the amount of customer service this position entails. You're with people all day. All you deal with is customers. And you deal with us, you know, apologies in advance. So you have to be a, you have to have thick skin. You have to have propensity to adapt to different personalities and different, different ways of doing things. And in your resume, how many years of experience do you have in customer service? You touched upon it earlier, but I want to say from what I read, it was over 20 at least, but how?
Over, over like 40 years.
Forty years.
Thirty-five, yeah. I started at Market Basket as, as on Saturdays. That was my job. I went to St. Bernard's High School in Pittsburgh.
Oh, you did?
I did. Class of '84. Class of '84. I, I live in Lunenburg. There's no car wash in Lunenburg. I go to the one on John Fitch. I love Hannaford, but Market Basket's fresher, and I go to the one in Pittsburgh. Columbus is just crazy. So, so a lot of my money does go back into Pittsburgh. I am not a resident. I live the next town over, but my paycheck goes into the city of Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
So you know.
You said over 40 years.
Forty years of customer service.
So I mean, between that and your, your town clerkship.
Yes.
I mean, if for anything, you know, you are extremely experienced in dealing with all, all different personalities that you come across. So you've seen it all.
Yes, I was the chair of the planning board for the town of Lunenburg for 10 years.
I saw that too.
So I have the municipal running a meeting. I, I just, I get involved. I just love being involved. I'm the president of the women's club. I just love, and I love elderly people.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that as part of your qualifications because I think it got overlooked, certainly by me. I was focusing more on the town clerkship, and that was good enough. But I didn't, I didn't emphasize the 40 years of customer service experience you bring to the table too. And that is, that is paramount to this kind of a position.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz.
I have no further questions. President Zarella, thank you.
All right. Any further questions or comments?
Move to confirm the appointment.
Second.
I have a motion and second to confirm the appointment. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Cragan.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
And Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Congratulations and welcome to the city.
Thank you for coming. I know I'm crazy. I'm, I'm.
We'll see you again soon.
I'm on vacation already.
All right.
I'm planning the tour.
Thank you.
Welcome to the city.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Welcome aboard. Thanks, I'll be on to you.
Good luck.
Thank you all so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When's your bus departure?
The 19. The 19, yes.
I'm going to be on vacation.
That, that'll, that'll give for an easy transition. All right. I'm very pleased with this outcome, and we will now move on with our agenda. We have a communication from the Pension Reserves Investment Management Board, which will be placed on file if there is no objection, seeing none. We also have a presentation from Tom Skorowski, Director of Community Development and Planning with, in regards to multifamily for MBTA communities.
Good evening, councilors. I am here pursuant to a new state law, part of 40U, the state's zoning-enabling legislation, Section 3A, that was passed with the 2021 Economic Development Bill and then signed in by the governor in January of 2021. And basically creates some requirements for communities that live within commuter rail, subway, or other stations to have zoning that can allow for transit-oriented development housing. And the program basically creates a set of carrots, if you will, to incentivize communities to become eligible. And we are eligible, and I'll tell you how we are in just a moment, but in order to be eligible, one of the base-level requirements is that I present to you what the law is. So here I am, and I'm going to try to be brief to give you enough sense of what the law is, but, but not bore you with the topic. And I'll talk about how Pittsburgh fits in. So this presentation is taken straight from the state, so this is completely plagiarized for the record. You'll see where I added slides in here and there. But this, this law was really developed because of the housing production gap in the state. So between 1960 and 1990, the state had permitted 900,000 housing units. In that same year period, between 1990 and present, we've permitted 470,000. So, you know, long story short, we're not catching up with the demand that there is for housing production. And a recent state study had looked at a shortfall of 200,000 housing units across the state, and you guys all know we're in the midst of a housing crisis here as a result. So this law was part of a more comprehensive effort from the Baker administration to help promote housing development through spending and other sort of legislative reforms. And the chief among them is the Housing Choice Zoning Reform Effort, which created a series of improvements in the 40A zoning amendment process to make it easier for communities to adopt housing-related zoning. And it also included this requirement of Section 3A, which I'll talk about in just a minute. So in, in just a little bit of background, this law really focused on transit-oriented housing development and was really based on a study from the Mass Housing Partnership that looked at, you know, just a modest increase in density per acre, just 10 homes per acre could yield approximately 253,000 additional housing units over time, thus kind of closing that gap. So they looked at, if we did this within all the proximity to the commuter rail stations, subway stations, bus transit locations, we could really help close the gap in housing production and do so in proximity to rail and transit. So we're creating that transit-oriented development opportunities where people don't have to rely on the automobile to get to work, and they can kind of live, work, and play all in one location and utilize transit accordingly. So today, we're going to talk about the guidelines that have come out from DHCD, which is the administering entity at the state for Section 3A. And according to the state, they are consistent with the underlying law. They focused on zoning, the local rules that govern, but they also provide local control. So we still have discretion where those multifamily districts are located and the rules established in those districts. The draft guidelines do not include a production mandate. It doesn't say we have to produce X amount of housing. It just says we need to create a zoning district that would allow for the production of housing. It has nothing to do with the Chapter 40B, which many of you might know as the Affordable Housing Mandate. This is distinct from that. This has nothing to do with affordability. It's just zoning for housing production. And actual production depends on all kinds of factors, like developer interest, infrastructure, if we have the water sewer capacity, and of course, just market dynamics. So again, this is about creating the zones, but not saying you need to produce X amount of houses by this period of time. There's too many factors to allow for such a mandate. So the relevant section, I just bolded a few key points. It requires a city such as ours, that's termed an MBTA community, to have one district of a reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. As of right is sort of seen as distinct from a special permit, which is either issued by the ZBA or the planning board in communities. And the assumption with a special permit is exactly what it sounds like. It's special. And it is a permit that the burden of proof is on the applicant to, to show why they are allowed to do the thing that they're asking to do. If something is allowed by right, conversely, the assumption is the applicant can do the thing that they're, they're looking to do, and of course, in this case, producing multifamily housing of considerable scale. So this new law requires a district of a reasonable size, which they've deemed as 50 acres, has a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, and shall be located not more than 0.5 miles from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station. And if we do not comply, we are not eligible for funds from the Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Projects Fund, and most importantly for our purposes, the Mass Works Program, which has funded over $7 million of infrastructure projects in the last 10 years and hopefully a few million more in the next year. So these are all the communities that are designated MBTA communities, 175 of our 351 cities and towns. And they are distinguished in four different categories: subway or light rail communities, an MBTA bus community, a commuter rail community, or an adjacent community, which means a community that sits beside a commuter rail facility or a subway facility. So in our case, we're a commuter rail community. And as a result, we are required to have a district of a reasonable size that allows for up to 15% of our total housing stock to be permitted as housing. And for us, that number, our housing stock, is, it was in the letter, but just.
3,000 or something.
17,452 units is 15%.
We're going to get there at some point. So 2,618 units by right is 15% of our total stock, which is 17,452 units as a whole. So I'm going to bypass this. I hope you all are okay with that. You can do the research at your leisure. But the most important thing for our purposes is we need to be at least 15 units an acre to give you a sense of what 15 units per acre means. Here's an example in Westwood, Norfolk, Sudbury, and Lexington. The Pittsburgh examples, Crescent Town Homes, which was recently developed just off a main street, was 13.7 acres. So that's a little bit under 15. 470 Main Streets, about 31 units an acre. So somewhere in between there is sort of that 15-acre unit-per-acre sweet spot. So in order to come into compliance, what we need to do as a municipality is apply for interim compliance through the MBTA Community Information Form. And I basically need to check a box that said we discussed this law at, at a city council meeting, which we're doing right now. And that will keep us eligible for Mass Works and Housing Choice community grants and hopefully help us attain full eligibility in the future. But I want to talk about what this means for us and why we're eligible. So the Pittsburgh requirement, as a commuter rail community, we need 2,618 units to be permitted by right within a district of a reasonable size, at least 50 acres, and at least 50% of that acreage needs to be within a half mile of a commuter rail facility. Thankfully, in 2019, and in the years before that, we approved two smart-growth zoning districts. The downtown district, which is in kind of that green color, was added in 2019. That includes all of Main Street, the BF Brown building, and that was really the impetus for that change. And then the west district was a scattered site, pre-existing 40R district, that was adopted before 2019 and adopted by my predecessor here, Larry. And both of those districts taken together help us satisfy this zoning requirement. I'll show you why briefly. So the west district is about 34.2 acres and has a max density of 40 units per acre allowed by right. The downtown district is 48.5 acres and allows for a max density of 50 units per acre by right. So taken together, we have 82 acres and the capacity for about 3,700 units of housing to be produced by right. So we are in compliance, you know, subject to state review and approval, in my view. And that's really the next step. I'll submit the form, tell them why I think we're in compliance, tell them that we talked about this at a meeting tonight, and show them evidence of such. And then we'll await word from DHCD on our presumed full compliance. But at least by doing this and submitting the form, we'll know we're in interim compliance. So for the next year, we will be eligible for all those various grant programs. And at that, I will take any questions, comments you might have.
Counselor Jantholi.
Thank you. When I saw this presentate, when I saw the information, I immediately thought to myself that we're, we're almost like ahead of the eight ball with this because we, we have Warren Square going on, we have the Art Colony. I repeat myself all the time with these, but we're already like, got our foot on the gas pedal with pursuing these housing developments. I just wanted to ask you if, you know, the, the proposed project on the corner of Day and Main, behind the CVS on Snow Street, the Ivor Johnson facility, I mean, we have these projects in the works still, right?
Correct.
And, and so if those projects come to fruition, which we all hope they do, where in the downtown area is there, would this impact us being able to do even more? Because you said there are grant opportunities. What would those grant opportunities allow us to achieve if they didn't, as opposed if they didn't exist? Is that to give tax credits to developers? Is that? And so if those projects come to fruition, which we all hope they do, where in the downtown area is there, would this impact us being able to do even more? Because you said there are grant opportunities. What would those grant opportunities allow us to achieve if they didn't, as opposed if they didn't exist? Is that to give tax credits to developers? Is that, what would that grant money be for?
Good question. So the Mass Works Program, you know, funded the work that we did on River Street and is funding the main Boulder project today. And in the future, we'll be looking at things like working with the university on an application for the parking lot right behind us, next to the theater block, and potentially improvements to Morin Square in the future as well. So it's a really key infrastructure project that you always have to have a big private development, generally a housing development that helps trigger that infrastructure investment. The Housing Choice Community Program is a newer program that includes capital and technical assistance grants focused on either driving housing production or, again, more infrastructure to support housing. We're currently not eligible for the program because it's prefaced on meeting a threshold of production in terms of housing production. And I don't think a single community in North Central has been eligible because what they do is they take your five-year total of housing production, and you need to basically be at 3% or 5% of your total stock. You need to have produced that number in the last five years. And we recovered from the last housing crisis a lot slower than the rest of the state, and the market didn't catch up. So we actually haven't met that threshold. But what I would hope, with all the projects we're talking about, we would meet that threshold and then be eligible for that program as well.
So my only last, my last question is, so for example, if, maybe I'm going on a limb here, but this money that we would be eligible for, could it also be used to obtain parcels or properties?
The Housing Choice, the Housing Choice Program, potentially. I am not as familiar with the program, to be quite honest with you, because we haven't been eligible. I haven't devoted a lot of bandwidth to it. But theoretically, you know, at least working with our redevelopment authority and all the different properties that they've added to the district, it gives us another tool in our toolbox to work with our partners.
Because one of the, one of the buildings in downtown that I get asked a lot about, and I've been asked why we don't pursue obtaining it and then selling it off, is the Santander Bank. It's a huge facility. It almost looks like it's ripe for residential development, and it's so close to the station. It's almost like a gem that we can't seem to utilize, and it's been vacant for, I don't know how long.
Right.
It's probably at least 10 years.
Yeah.
So like, the reason why I asked that question about this Mass Works money being allowing us to obtain parcels, I guess where I was going with that is understanding that some of these private owners have done nothing with their facilities for so long, would this be a way for us to maybe, you know, grab some of this and get it off our hands to someone who will do something with it?
And Mass Works couldn't allow us to do that, Housing Choice potentially, but I do think the greatest opportunity we have is the Urban Renewal Plan, which you all just approved as a council a few months back. That property has not sat dormant for lack of trying. We actually made the property owner aware that Santander was leaving a year before they knew. And they're an absentee landlord that had this of many projects in their portfolio, and they've been more interested in investing here today. They've put over $100,000 into asbestos remediation, and I think they're looking for next steps. And the mayor convened a developer conference in early March, and we had Jay Ash from the Mass Competitive Partnership, who then came as a follow-up last week. And every time, we talk about that property. It's the first thing you see when you get into downtown. It's a beautiful property, and if you ever go up to the top, you've got views in every direction of all the most beautiful sights in Pittsburgh. So it is a gem that we are looking to take advantage of as an housing opportunity. So any tool in the toolbox that can help us get there is a good thing.
Any way for us to get tax dollars back to our community by applying for these programs or getting, you know, certified to be eligible for this money, we certainly should take advantage of it. And I thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Counselor Squawley.
Thank you. Tom, I just have a comment. I attended a MMA seminar in January on the multifamily requirements for the MBTA communities, and I knew Pittsburgh was one of them. And listening to the presentation, I knew that Pittsburgh had already complied with all these requirements, but I couldn't, I didn't exactly know how. And this presentation was extremely clear, and I really appreciate how clearly that you demonstrated it to us.
Thank you. And I want to commend the council too, because in 2019, you all helped make this happen. A lot of communities within the region are scrambling right now to figure out how to get into compliance. It was nice to see the new guidelines come out and not have to worry about it at all, except for this presentation. So you guys really put the work in.
Thank you. All set, counselor?
Yes.
I have Counselor Brochman.
Tom, I was reading over the package. I got a question, probably has to do with it. We're talking about the Knott Street project, not Snow Street, 156 units, by the way, that's still for sale. But I also read in your letter that you sent out in the package that the developer's changing what he wants to do, and for market rate housing, he wants to go 20% affordable.
And that will, that's a separate item on the agenda, but I'd be happy to talk about it, I mean, briefly, and then in more detail when the time comes. So they're looking to get an income mix on the project because market rate in and of itself wouldn't be viable. They want to get on the 40R smart-growth zone because the bare minimum you need to qualify would be 20% affordable. And, you know, to be transparent, it'd probably be a higher number than that, what they end up coming with. But what I will say is, being a 40R project then makes it eligible for $3,000 per unit in density bonus payments. So $3,000 per, you know, 150 units, that's a, that's a chunk of change right there that goes back to the city and to the general fund. And it also makes us eligible on a sliding scale with more money through what's called the zoning incentive payment. So like conservatively, we're looking at over $500,000 in payments from the state if that project is built out and it utilizes the 40R process. Still subject to state approval and, of course, the council approving the district, but it, I think, is a net benefit to the city.
Mr. President, should I wait for him to discuss this further? Or can I keep...
I would say let's wait until it comes up on the agenda.
Okay.
Because as he said, it's a separate item.
All right. I'll wait on this, on here. Now, one other question before I yield the floor. How about West Pittsburgh? Because you got a bus, the depot up there too in West Pittsburgh, would that area be affected?
It doesn't need to be. We have just one district that we have to have of a reasonable size, and we have that within the downtown. We certainly could consider that, but what I will say is, we've done a lot of, and certainly Mary Jo and myself in particular, work focused on economic development planning around the Watch Houston stop. We have the Lagoon site. We have a tract of land owned by Georgia Pacific and a few other parcels that I think are ripe for commercial development that I think we would like to see more of like an opportunity for. With the downtown district, we have housing focused around the commuter rail. I would love to see within that district, employment opportunities focused around the commuter rail, and that's really our intent. So that's the thought process there.
Yeah. I have no problem what you're trying to do as long, and I brought it up before at the City Properties Meeting, and I'll repeat my statement again, that we got to really focus on market rate housing downtown. I keep on saying it. Because if you're not going to put market rate housing, then we're going to go to some of theirs.
Again, can we wait on the discussion of the zoning until we get to that? This is just the discussion of the new law.
All right. All right. I'll wait.
I think I opened up Pandora's Box there when I started talking, so apologies.
Quite all right. I would have cut you off if I didn't want you to. All set, counselor?
I'll watch. I yield the floor, sir.
Thank you. I next have Counselor Fleming.
Okay. I don't know if, I don't know if this is on the same lines as what Counselor Brochman was asking, but that money, there would be no strings attached, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The biggest concern, and I've just got to put it out there, and I get this with all the new developments that have been approved, are they're going to be low-income housing, that these are going to be our new low-income housing units. And I try to ensure these constituents that that is not the case, but for some reason, they have it in their head that this is what it's going to be eventually.
And I think the housing that we're producing downtown, I think larger developments tend to favor income mixing, and I think we should favor that as a matter of practice. I think our rents in the city are almost de facto affordable in some ways, so having a good mix of affordable and market rate is, I think, a good thing. And we don't have high concentrations of one or the other, like the Aronoff project, which is 40% affordable and 60% market rate, or 470 Main Street, which is 75% market rate, 25% affordable. And I think striving for a mix like that's, I think, a good thing. I don't think we're at the place yet with large housing developments that can be 100% market-driven. We can certainly, I think we've got about 20 properties on Main Street, just smaller-scale developments that can support market rate housing on a much smaller scale, or even Crescent Street Townhomes, which did get a state subsidy to support it. But once you get bigger, it tends to be something where there is a mix to make it viable from a market perspective.
Okay. I don't think there's a third category you're missing there. We have affordable, we have market, and we have low income. Those are three different categories.
Right.
People are more concerned of the first one I mentioned or the second one. So I think that's more of the concern. Affordable and market are different. So I just, that's the concern.
And certainly, every larger project has at least a component, usually about 10%, that's reserved for extremely low income. That might be what you're considering in this case, but, which might be different than 100%, which is maybe the perception, but not necessarily the reality.
Okay. I don't think that's put out there, though.
Yeah.
I think we only talk market and affordable.
Yeah.
Not low income. And I think that needs to put out there more so people really know what's coming into their neighborhoods.
Absolutely. I think having a diversity of income types is a good thing.
Yes.
All set, counselor?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I want to note that, and it just became aware to me, and I'm all for any opportunity, any tool in the toolbox, as Mr. Skorsky puts it, for creating housing, whatever it may be, mixed income, especially affordable market, even some low. And it's important to have the diversity because there are more than 10,000 people on the list at the Pittsburgh Housing Authority right now for housing assistance. And that's not everybody from Pittsburgh. That's our surrounding areas. It's all the way to Worcester, but more than 10,000 people. It's a lot of people. And I'm low-income, even with my stipend from the city of Pittsburgh. So I think when we, you know, when we talk about these things, I think Counselor Fleming made a good point. It's important that we translate what the truths are, that we're not building these 100% very low-income buildings, right? We're building mixed income for the market reasons, for social reasons, all of the above, because it's important to have that mix and that diversity. But I just, I guess my point is there are more than 10,000 people currently with the Pittsburgh Housing Authority in need of housing assistance. We've all been out there. I'm looking for a house right now. It's miserable out there to buy a house. Everybody, it's like, it's like what we talk about around the water cooler right now, how terrible it is and how hard it is out there. So I'm all for anything that we can do for more tools in the toolbox, and I want to commend Mr. Skorsky and everybody at his office for figuring out every tool that we have, and I'm all in favor of this. I yield the floor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. Oh, Counselor Cregan.
Thank you, Tom, for explaining this. I briefly looked through the Housing Choice towns, and there's a few in the Worcester Middlesex District, but they're the smaller towns like Berlin, and then, you know, towns like Littleton. So anyway, that's, that's over here. As the Chair of the City Property, as I endeavor to climb the mountain that is understanding city property, are there properties that might become available that would come to our subcommittee that would be able to then be turned around RFP and then, you know, be eligible for grants?
I certainly hope 491 Main, which the committee had seen at their last meeting, would be one of those properties. And I think we'll see more in the future, and Taft Street on a smaller scale with homeownership opportunities potentially, just to name a few. But I think that is something we're moving away with the right property of just auctioning it off, but if we see a good housing opportunity, we want to go through the RFP process so we can make sure if it is housing, it's housing we want in the form we want, et cetera. But it's certainly something that's on our radar.
Yeah. I was thinking of 491, and I think, again, for the city to have the control over, you know, what comes in in terms of an RFP and what it is that we want. I go down Main Street often, and, you know, it is beautiful. It is walking distance to the train station. We, you know, we look like Somerville. We look like larger communities closer to Boston in terms of our architecture and appeal. So anyway, I'm excited about doing this, and I yield the floor.
Thank you. If everyone has been heard, then I am happy to state for the record and for the benefit of the state that this matter has been well and truly discussed.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Cregan, report of the City Property Committee, please.
You have before you the, let's see, the different properties that we had votes on last, all right, it is this first page here. So as you can see, we discussed and we are turning several properties back over to the city, and these include Zero Daniel Street, Zero Taft Street, 50 Granite Street, and 491 Main Street. We are going to be holding Zero Sawmill Pond Road, which we had a number of residents come out to speak, speak on because they're concerned about what happens to an acre of land out there in the woods on 31. And then we have the Adrian Ford Way, which is going to be co-named. Union Street will be co-named Adrian Ford Way. Thank you to Public Works Subcommittee. I'd like to thank Counselor Van Hazinga for writing up absolutely beautiful minutes of our meeting. And so at this point, my understanding of the process is that it is now before the full city council. We get to vote on these items. Does anyone from our subcommittee have anything to add?
I'll just...
Or would be your prole to, to ask that? Would that be, that would be your prole to ask?
It would be, but it's fine. No big deal.
Okay.
I will just note for the record that there, I think you may have had the school committee still in your head when you were first...
Totally.
Starting off. We are, we are actually, these are already city properties and are being declared surplus. When the school committee declares something surplus, it reverts to the city's general ownership. But when the city declares something surplus, it's simply preparatory to either auctioning or putting it out for RFP or whatever.
Move to accept the committee report.
I would just like to ask, I wasn't quite done, sorry, counselor.
Sorry.
That we hold out 34 and 57-22 for different reasons, which I will address afterwards.
Move to accept the committee report, except for 032, 034 and 057-22.
Second.
On a motion.
Counselor Brochman.
I just got one quick question, and that would be on, I just want to make sure, on 033 Granite Street, that's an RFP, right?
I believe that is what we decided.
RFP?
Yes.
Granite Street? Okay. That's all I want to make sure.
Okay. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. On 034-22, I just wanted to note that I was one of the committee members, not the only one, who had reasons to hold it, and that was for legal research purposes. I have done that legal research and can inform the committee and the council that the plan that the Community Development Office has for the parcels, RFP, is, at least at first blush, legally acceptable and meets the, meets the requirements that it has under the zoning law. Counselor Squawley?
Just to add to that, I believe counselors had other additional questions in addition to your legal concerns.
Yes, certainly. I am not trying to suggest that we don't hold this. I just wanted to report to the council and to the committee that that particular issue, at least to my satisfaction, has been resolved, although of course, you know, I'm just one committee member. Counselor Brochman?
Can I make a motion that we pass that 034-22? I mean, what difference does it make if we know how much back taxes are on? It doesn't, what's the difference? It ain't going to have any bearing on the matter.
And certainly make the motion that the, I'm sorry, Counselor Cregan?
I just want to speak on Counselor Brochman's comment. I believe the question from my notes were that 491 Main Street was the property we wished to know the back taxes. How many taxes... How many taxes were in arrears on?
Well, I thought it was the Sawmill Pond.
Okay.
That too, that as well, I believe.
Okay. We can, I'll ask both.
But yes, Counselor, you certainly have the ability to make that motion, that we reject the recommendation of the committee and pass the matter outright. That is your prerogative. I see, however, that Counselor Squalia has an additional comment she'd like to make.
Just to note for the record, the concerns the committee had, which is why we held it, is the questions were, is commercial use of the parcel grandfathered through the special permit? Is it possible for development of the parcel to tie into the sewer line and Route 31 directly rather than tying into the condo system? And the third was how much in back taxes is owed by the property.
Thank you, Counselor. And I will note that my comment was directed to the first of those concerns, and I do believe that there is at least a colorable legal argument that it is grandfathered. Speaking, of course, as a counselor who has done his research, not as a lawyer offering professional engineering here, but that said, the matter is before the council.
Move to accept the committee report on 034 and 057-22.
Second. Can I ask that that be only 034? We haven't addressed 057 yet.
So moved.
You want to hold it?
Yes.
I'm not in favor of holding it.
All right. I have a motion and second to accept the recommendation of the committee, which is to hold the matter in committee for 034-22, Zero Sawmill Pond Road.
Again, on a motion? On a motion?
On the motion, Counselor Broshman.
On a motion. Tom Skorsky gave a really good explanation, and he told us basically that he would make sure that they would not tie into their, to their pumpers, cities, their sewer line system, that he would do all possible research and everything else, and make sure that it would get done that way, the way we recommended it, that we would like to see, and that was going to be in the RFP. I can't see holding this, really.
I understand.
I'll leave it up to the VP, VP over there on the side of the council.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the intent by holding it was so that we could get these questions answered in order to convey the committee's opinions regarding the priorities for the parcel, because there were some questions there about what we as the city would like to see there and what we should list as the most advantageous or use, or other uses of the parcel. And those questions go towards what is feasible on the property, and if we do, if we sell it through an RFP for commercial development, one of the concerns we want to know is whether or not they could sign directly or would have to go through the adjacent residential community, because it would affect that community. So I really think it's not a question of are these going to be sold? It's a question of crafting the RFP correctly so it identifies the priorities for the city.
Thank you, Vice President.
Then I remove my motion. I'll go with hers.
Okay, you, yeah, I mean, there was no motion. So I have a still pending motion and second to approve the recommendation of the committee as to 034-22, which is to hold in committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Seeing none, it is unanimous. Now, 057-22, I have asked to be held out because there is a further order relative, isn't this the one that has the additional parcel?
I was curious about why it was being held. That's a different parcel, one that was declared surplus in 2019, so we're in the clear there.
Gotcha. Thank you. I got them mixed up. It's also a parcel on Main Street, right?
Uh, Water Street. Another key corridor, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Move to accept the committee report on 057-22.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to accept the recommendation of the committee as to 057-22, that is to grant the petition. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. All right. Next up, we have an oral report of the Economic Development Committee. Counselor Van Hazenga.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Economic Development Committee met, and we considered two petitions. The first was a petition of the Pittsburgh Planning Board to amend the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance, make several corrections and clarifications. That was held unanimously due to the fact that the city council, or I'm sorry, the planning board would like to weigh in with further comments, so we want to wait and make sure we get that comment before we make any recommendations to the full council. The second order was a, in reference to a memorandum between the city of Pittsburgh as well as the city of Leamester with the Twin Cities Rail Trail Association regarding the roles and responsibilities of each party to maintain the new trail, as outlined in the attached order. And the trail is not yet open, it's scheduled, Phase 1 is scheduled to open in June, and there are different responsibilities that are being highlighted between the newly-formed Twin Cities Rail Trail Association and the cities in which the trail is located. And under this agreement, the cities are agreeing to handle rubbish disposal from waste bins located along the trail in the city, to also to support cleanup events organized by the association, and also to direct any revenues generated on the rail trail, such as the lease of parking spaces, billboards, or other things like that, to the Rail Trail Association for use on the rail trail. And also to work with the association to allow them to make rules and improvements to the rail trail over time. And in return, the association is agreeing to mow along the rail trail and to cut back vegetation to make sure it stays open and maintains sightlines. There's a question of possibly plowing the trail in winter, but that's to be determined whether or not that's warranted, and there are funds available to do that. Also to, for the association to handle regular cleanup efforts along the trail to make sure it remains usable and an asset to the different communities. And to this end, the association is undertaking a capital campaign to raise funds. They've already gotten one very large donation and other additional supports. And Mr. Cassas, please correct me if I'm wrong, there is a website, twincitystrail.com?
That's correct.
Where people who are interested can make donations to help with this endowment. And the plan is for that endowment to be a perpetuating fund to use income generated from that to pay for the year-to-year maintenance of the trail. And this will be handled by both volunteers and also professional contracts with contractors to maintain it, to make sure it's, everything is kept in good shape. Some concerns were raised about how this is going to be done, but we do have a good plan in place. Some of it is, this is new, there'll be a bit of a learning experience. We'll start our efforts, and as problems arise, we will respond to them. One of the concerns that was raised is law enforcement along the trail, and that is something that has already a concern in these areas, and hopefully by having people coming and going and using the trail, by having it more open and visible, that will help. But the police forces of both Pittsburgh and Leamester are aware of the issues along the trail, and will be aware, and we will respond to those things. I believe that they're all the big items that were brought up today, and the committee did recommend approval of the memorandum, five to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I was wondering, I was wondering, because I couldn't really hear Larry talk and Tom talk, if you could just talk a little bit, if the Chair, if the Vice Chair doesn't mind?
I defer to the President.
Sure, if you'd like to make a presentation on this subject, either of you, you're more than welcome.
Gladly. You just highlight, I got a couple of questions. I just want to make sure, I heard Marcus talk about it a little bit, the Council Dean Natale and Counselor Fleming talked about. I just want to make it clear, because they brought this up many years ago when you first came up, like Pat Tom's drop, that we don't have enough people. The DPW doesn't have enough people to work, and I want to make sure I understood what you're saying, that your volunteers are going to do 90% of the work, most of the work?
Have you had a chance to take a look at the memorandum, Counselor?
Yeah, I did, I read the man.
It clearly, fairly, I think, clearly provides bullet points for each of the activities that the association is going to be responsible for. And you're right, it was written and organized in such a way that recognizes the fact that the city doesn't have the resources on its Department of Public Works to take on this new responsibility on top of all the other city parks that it has. So we're trying to form a partnership with both cities so that there's a single entity responsible, that we're cost-effective, that we make sure the trail is maintained on both cities equally well, so that you don't cross over the city line and see a completely different scenario on the other side. We're going to need the cooperation of the city, obviously, to make this happen, because it's a volunteer effort. It's going to involve a lot of participation in the community. We've been approached by a lot of civic organizations and by churches who've already agreed that they want to adopt some role with helping to take care of it. So we're in a position now where I can't offer any guarantees, but I think that everyone's acting in good faith, and that we have a lot of very capable people, and we've already seen a lot of outpouring of support from the community. So we are hoping that this is going to address that concern, that we have a trail that people can be proud of and enjoy using and feel safe when they're using it.
Okay, all right. My only question, my two questions, and what I'm concerned about, because I drive by there already and already saw some places illegal dumping, and that's a big issue throughout the city, not just the rail trail, but throughout the city. My big concern is I'm hoping, and I agree with Counselor Fleming on this, because she brought it up, that they will be cameras down there. I'm hoping that they can be cameras. We don't have, again, we don't have enough people in the police department to say that, yeah, they can drive a four-wheeler up and down the rail trail for three hours or four hours a day. We don't have enough people. I seen tonight, you call them and it takes them 15, 20 minutes to respond to a call when you got a B and E going on. I use that for an example, but it takes time for them to come. So that's, that's what I want to know, if you will be pushing, definitely be pushing for cameras.
We've had meetings with both the police chiefs of the two cities. They've expressed their concerns, which are ongoing, by the way. They're not being created by the trail so much as they've been problems that they've experienced over the years in those areas. This will change that, we hope, for the better, because it opens the area up, all the brush will be cleared back, we'll have clear lines of vision, people will be using the trail. So it discourages certain uses that have been a concern in the past. So that, I think, is a positive. But yes, the chiefs have talked about using cameras at select locations. I think that is probably going to be happening, but I don't know the current status of the plans for that.
In select locations, certainly in part of Phase 2 will be part of the mast dot design process. I think in Phase 1, it's going to be a local decision. Once the trail is operational, we'll kind of monitor and adjust accordingly. And I do think clearing the vegetation, getting more users on the trail, which, again, just for the edification of the public, the trail is not yet open. It's not open until June, and until then, any dumping or anything you see like that is outside of the jurisdiction of the city, because it is under the jurisdiction of Lynch, the construction company doing the work right now. So part of the issue right now, you've got deferred maintenance from a corridor that was abandoned for 50 years, and now you have a further issue where you have a trail that is getting dumping occurring on it, and no local control over the cleanup process. And we hope, hopefully that will change soon. We'll be able to start with a clean slate. We'll have a lot of users on the trail, and I think we'll monitor and adjust accordingly.
Okay. You know, the way I asked, old Council, Council President, they just put it, they fixed up the park in Park Hill, and we're already starting to see some vandalism and that stuff happening up there, even with a lot of people using it. You got vandalism happening. So I just want them to be aware of the fact that just because you have people, some people just turn their back and say, hey, I don't want to get involved, and they just keep on walking or riding. So I just want to make it well-known. And I just want to make them feel that the city does not have the resources, again, I repeat what a couple of councils said, to take on another added recreational park to handle. We don't have it. We don't have, we can't get done what we need to get done. And you come up to Park Hill, and I can show you, so.
And that's exactly the reason why we're sitting here before you tonight.
All right.
Because of that reason.
I want to make sure I understand it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll support it, but I just want to make sure you know where I'm coming from.
Move to accept the report of the committee.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report of the committee. If there is no objection, then we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Finance Committee, Counselor Dean Natale.
Finance met on March 22nd. 35-22 and 36-22 were two state-issued grants totaling roughly $10,000 to teach and educate fire safety to seniors and students. And 37-22 was for $15,552 as a budgetary transfer from Veterans Personal Services Clerical to Veteran Expenses Temporary Personal Services. The existing clerical staff there is no longer there, and this is request for temporary help until a permanent replacement, so this is just a transfer.
Move to accept the Finance Committee report.
Second. I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report. Just for the record, Counselor Cruz is temporarily out of the room and will not be voting. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Seeing no objection, it is unanimous, and the report is accepted. Next, we have me, Legislative Affairs Committee. As with most meetings of the Legislative Affairs Committee, this was a fairly detail-oriented meeting, and so I have not yet had the opportunity since Thursday to type up the minutes, but I will give the oral report. We had three items. One is 009-22, the recommendations on the zoning ordinance previously referenced by Vice President Van Hazenga. The committee recommended adoption with some amendments. I will note, however, that due to the planning board's desire to weigh in further, it may be advisable to hold it anyway, and/or to schedule it for public hearing and return it to committee for further discussion, so that way we have the public hearing on the calendar. Then we had 028-22, Counselor Sam Squalia, to increase available resident off-street parking during a snow emergency. Counselor Squalia was unable to attend the meeting, and so we felt that since, in April, there is no particular urgency to snow emergency parking, we would hold that petition until such time as its proponent could present to us. And then 054-22, whereas a third amendment is necessary in order to allow the town of Westminster to transfer discharge from the Route 31 sewer line to the Route 2A sewer line, and the parties entered into the agreement and wished to continue into good-faith negotiations relative to the terms of a new intermunicipal agreement after receiving certain studies that remain outstanding and input from the Department of Environmental Protection and the Environmental Protection Agency so as to best accommodate increased flow from Westminster. This was unanimously approved, and Mr. Skorsky, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is simply an extension of the existing agreement along with a shifting of some of the flow volume from one line to another in response to differing growth patterns in the town of Westminster.
I'm not a technical expert, but that sounds accurate.
Right, I'm sorry, this wasn't your presentation. This was Nick Erickson. I apologize. Counselor Squalia?
So will the suggestion be to accept the committee report except for 009-22, which we will hold pending the planning board?
That would be my suggestion. I would invite input from any of my fellow committee members if they disagree.
I will make that motion, but to accept the committee report except for holding 009-22.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the recommendation of the committee as to 028-22 and 054-22, and to hold 009-22 in committee. If there is no objection, I'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is adopted, and I would like to entertain a motion to schedule 009-22 for a public hearing on May 3rd, again, just so that winds up on the calendar.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second to schedule a public hearing for 009-22 on May 3rd, 2022. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it will be scheduled. Next up, I have a report of the Public Works Committee. Counselor Fleming?
Thank you, President. On March 29th, the committee met to take up the, actually, five petitions. 17-22, Counselor Bernie Schultz and Mari Barasso of 155 Milk Street, owner of the adjacent property, to repair a retaining wall at the rear of 155 Milk Street extending into Maple Street. That was granted. Street, that was granted. 1822, Sergeant Dan Boudreaux of Fitchburg Police Traffic Unit, to petition for the installation of no parking at all times on both sides of Game On Way, from Industrial Road, Victoria Lane intersection, to Game On Soccer Facility's entrance. This was also referred to the public safety, and it was granted. 6122, Councillor Marcus De Natale and Paul Boschman, on behalf of Elmer U. Maggs, to repair a damaged berm in front of 427 Oak Hill Road that is now causing water runoff. That was granted. 06222, Councillor Paul Boschman, to install a berm from the corner of Stanley Street to 80 Pershing Street on both sides of the road to mitigate water runoff. This was amended to install a berm 10 feet on either side of Pershing, 60 Pershing Street. It was granted, as amended. And 8920, Councillor Bernie Schultz, resident Alex Friedman of 70 Rainville Ave, to remove the no-turn-on red sign at the intersection of John T. Citrino Memorial Drive and Water Street. That was held, thank you.
Mr. President, on 061 and 062, it'd be, on 061, that should have been held, because they're doing, he's checking into Unitel, because they did gas work up there and that berm get destroyed, get beat up by Unitel, so that was on hold.
Councillor Fleming?
I believe we granted it while he looked into it, because it was going to be done either way.
Yeah, we did, we did grant it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we granted it. They're going, he's got, Gary said he would look into it, Paul.
Oh, okay, all right, just want to make sure I didn't hear. And then the 062, on 062, that was supposed to be 10 feet before the driveway and 10 feet after the second driveway, all the way down. 10 feet prior to the driveway and 10 feet after the second driveway on 60 Pershing Street, all the way down.
Oh, all right, we have just 60 Pershing, it should be 80, so.
It does appear that's what the amendment accomplishes.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Move to accept the committee report.
Oh, okay.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report of the Public Works Committee. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is accepted. I also have a report of the Water Wastewater Commission on 05422, which we already adopted under the Legislative Affairs Committee. I had meant to mention this at this time, but we don't actually need to take action on this, this is just their report of their decision to us. So that can just be placed on file, and we already voted to approve it, so. Councillor Squallia?
No, I don't have a question.
Oh, okay. Next up, Orders Finance.
Motion to suspend 06422 through 08822. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, timeout. Sorry, motion made, sorry, I got ahead of myself. 06422 to 06722 be sent to Finance.
Okay.
Second.
Unless there is objection, we will waive the reading and send 064 through 067 to Finance.
Because I called him up and I asked if he was going to ask for suspension.
Is there any objection?
No.
Okay, then those are referred to Finance, and then we have the CDBG orders.
Motion for suspension on all orders.
Second.
On the motion?
Actually, this is a non-debatable motion, but I will note, by way of explanation, that this is just like what we did with the ARPA orders. We already approved the CDBG budget in full counsel, this is just the orders implementing what we already approved.
Okay, that's why I want to make sure that my record states on 085 that it said no.
Yep, you, all of your comments have been duly recorded.
Okay.
That said, I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for a two-thirds majority?
Councillor Schultz.
Yes.
Councillor Squallia.
Aye.
Councillor Van Hazenga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Councillor Boschman.
Yes.
Councillor Kuchar.
Yes.
Councillor Cragan.
Yes.
Councillor Cruz.
Yes.
Councillor De Natale.
Yes.
Councillor Fleming.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
All right, the matter is before the council.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion to accept the orders for CDBG. Thank you. You may, you may want to get that hair trigger checked, councillor. All right, so I have a motion and second to accept orders 06822 through and including 08822, all of which are implementation of the CDBG budget. If there is no objection, we will take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, they are approved. Then we have a resolution, 08922, resolution pertaining to a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Division of Conservation Services Drinking Water Supply Protection Grant Program, as outlined in the enclosed resolution, that is referred to Finance. And we have an ordinance in final reading.
Move 5522 be sent through its third and final reading and rolled, ordained, and advertised.
Second.
I have a motion and second to pass 05522 through its third and final reading and rolled, ordained, and advertised. If there is no objection, unless we, oh, this one is. Sure, we'll, we'll take it by roll call.
Councillor Schultz.
Yes.
Councillor Squallia.
Aye.
Councillor Van Hazenga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Councillor Boschman.
Yes.
Councillor Kuchar.
Yes.
Councillor Cragan.
Yes.
Councillor Cruz.
Yes.
Councillor De Natale.
Yes.
Councillor Fleming.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to ask that we hold off, I'm going to take 09122 separately, but then we have 09022 through 09722 excluding 091, which stand referred to their appropriate committees, I am, I will read them all off at the request of any councillor.
Mr. President, one question for you before we do that, I'm not going to have you read them all, is, since Tom is here, is he going to talk about 09022, the zoning on the Smart Road?
If you, if he wishes to, and if the council wishes.
Should we ask for suspension on the rules of that one, then?
I was going to say, if the council would like to suspend the rules and place it before us.
It's for a public hearing, though, is it not?
Yes.
So wouldn't he be making that?
That would be the theory.
My only comment would be a practical one, and I would ask that it be referred to Planning Board as well for their public hearing later this month.
All right, can I entertain a motion, actually, can I first entertain a motion to amend 09022 to simply correct the lot reference by removing the extraneous zero at the end?
So moved. Which extraneous zero?
19-2-A0, it's just 19-2-A.
19-2-A.
I have a motion and second to amend as stated. Any objections?
None.
It is approved under unanimous consent, and now I would like to entertain a motion to both refer this to a public hearing on May 3rd and refer it to Planning Board for them to schedule their public hearing at some time prior to that.
So moved.
I have a motion and second to refer as stated. If there is no objection, Councillor Squallia, on the motion?
The public hearing that we're sending, I thought the public hearing, May 3rd, was the Planning Board public hearing.
They may be doing it on the same day.
Huh?
They may be doing it on the same day, but, but that is where we referred our other zoning matter as well, to our public hearing on May 3rd, yes.
So are we sending it to a public hearing on May 3rd at the Planning Board, or a public hearing on May 3rd at the City Council?
City Council, we don't have the authority to schedule a Planning Board meeting, we can just refer it to them for them to schedule a meeting.
Okay.
If there is no objection, then it is referred. 0, is there anyone who has any desire to suspend or amend anything from 090222 through Otherwise, they stand referred to their appropriate committees as noted. 09122, I do have a request for suspension.
Make a motion for suspension of the rules of 09122?
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Schultz.
Yes.
Councillor Squallia.
Aye.
Councillor Van Hazenga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Councillor Boschman.
Yes.
Councillor Kuchar.
Yes.
Councillor Cragan.
Yes.
Councillor Cruz.
Yes.
Councillor De Natale.
Yes.
Councillor Fleming.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Skarowski, if you would like to outline this for the council?
Yeah, thank you. So in 2019, 617 Water Street, the former Northland and Manufacturing Building, was declared surplus by the council, we took it through tax title, and then since that time, we demoed the property, we did environmental remediation to give it a clean 201E, and now we're ready to sell it, working with our Realtor Appellatiar Properties, who's our on-call Realtor for all of our RFPs, and we realized that we only declared one parcel surplus, 617 Water. If you look at the parcel, there's actually a much larger portion that's classified as 0 Lancaster Street, parcel 109110, and I guess the assumption was it was all linked originally, and it's not. So the request in front of you is actually really to sell what we thought was 617 Water by putting 617 Water and 0 Lancaster Street together. It makes, you know, goes from a .45 acres to .97 acres, and, you know, ultimately, if we don't sell them together, we're going to have, 0 Lancaster Street is a landlocked parcel of no value to anyone else except for the person who would buy this from us. So we've got the property on the market now, hence the sense of urgency, we don't want to advertise it as being half of the parcel size it actually is, so this will allow us to really get the full and fair value of this property.
All right, any questions?
Make a motion to approve 9122?
Second. I have a motion and second to approve 9122. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. That concludes our business, I have two announcements, actually, Councillor Schultz, did you have an announcement this evening?
Did I have an announcement, I did have an announcement about the Ward 1 meeting.
Okay, it didn't make it into my papers, so if you would care to just give that briefly?
Yeah, the, we're having, I'm hosting a Ward 1 community meeting on Monday, April 11th, at 6:30 PM in the Legislative Building, and Planning and Community Development Director Tom Skarowski and Assessor Chris Paquette are going to go make presentations and answer questions following the presentations.
Thank you. And to clarify, Councillor Schultz did email me this, I just forgot to print it out. So then I have two other announcements. This Saturday, April 9th, from 9:00 AM to noon, Second Chance Animal Services returns to Fitchburg Fire Department, 33 North Street, Fitchburg, for a low-cost pet vaccine clinic. Rapies and distemper available for dogs, rabies and FIV for cats, $15, microchips for $20. Reservations can be made by visiting secondchancesanimals.org. The Fitchburg Historical Society's winter newsletter is out, and copies are available at City Hall and here in the Legislative Building. The cover story is on World War I soldier Adilard Boucher, who received the Distinguished Service Cross and Cross de Guerre. Be sure to pick up a copy.
President Zarella, just to add on to the pet vaccine clinic on Saturday morning, we also have a very generous donation through Second Chance Animal Services and Greater Good Charities and Bark Inc. of six to seven pallets full of dog beds or cat beds that are being given away to residents for free, community members, really, you don't have to be a resident of Fitchburg. Volunteers will be there between 9:00 AM and 12:00 PM on Saturday morning to help distribute free dog beds to community members, we have over 200 beds to give away.
Excellent. All right, that concludes our business for the evening.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn, there being no objection, we are adjourned.